Okay, good morning. I'd like to call to order the August 28th special meeting of the City Council. A roll call Denise.
Councilmember Morrow.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Potem Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Hernandez is absent.
Okay. Denise, do you have any announcements or communication? Okay. Anyone in the audience care to address the council for any item that is not on our agenda? You may now come forward. Seeing only staff in the audience. Public hearing for fee schedules.
Pretty much opening up, see if there's any comments and we'll have a second required public hearing on September 3rd. And that's when you would be approving the fees or making any changes.
Okay.
You can give some kind of direction to staff today.
Why don't we review the fee schedule? Walk us through it.
Gina Schuchardt, Interim Finance, Chief Financial Officer. And these are miscellaneous fees, this is the miscellaneous fee schedule fiscal year 14. And what staff has done, as well as with your assistance over the last few months, is going through the existing fee schedule and updating. Does it speak right into it? Okay. And updating everything that was feasible at the time. And the majority of the updates were deletions, as well as Parks and Rec came forward with a revamping of their groupings associated with their fees, as well as planning came forward and eliminated some county-related fees that were no longer applicable and adjusted the valuations, making them clearer, I believe. So, as we go through this, and talking about the CPI increase, what I've done is I've taken an April 2009 to April 2013 CPI, all consumers, and looked at that, it ended up being 7.83%. And then I also reviewed the health benefits, workers' comp, PRS rates that have occurred during that period of time. And this is a conservative request for an increase at this time, 7.83%. It's, since it is proposed at this point, it's up to you whether you want to choose that rate or choose a lower rate, but I wouldn't necessarily recommend a higher rate in regards to justifying the fees at this time. We will come forward to you in the future with a fee analysis program, hopefully within the next year, going into detail on justifying all the fees. And we can go through page to page. And we have done this before, but I'll briefly go through. The admin fee, as you can see, we deleted a weapons permit that was no longer applicable.
Oh darn.
Yes. And in terms of the structure of the fee schedule, you have the description, the current rate, and what the CPI at 7.83% would look like. And then a column describing any kind of changes. We've added a ground base fee in the cemetery section of the fee schedule. We are deleting change of address, and these are, again, minor administrative changes. And fire, what we, fire with ambulance service rates, that changes quite a bit with the county. So that's just going to be updated administratively in our fee schedule, since we won't be bringing it to you every time it's updated. Harbor fees, you've reviewed the harbor fees and we've changed that, so the current rate is actually the recent change. There is no CPI increase on that current change, on that recent change. Law enforcement, no change there other than that 7.83% increase. And the planning fee, if you like detail, little additional details on page 19, that is Amanda's backup on that, in terms of describing the changes. And what we've done here is really kind of made it clearer. So if somebody comes in to take, wants to develop something, they can actually see the fee structure and ask additional questions as a result. And she also did modify, I believe it's a final track map, map, 25% of all costs was changed to 20% to make it consistent with other fees. On page eight, again, you'll see the structural change there with SEQA and EIR, more detail in terms of what goes into the cost of review. On page nine, I've inserted the valuation table just for review and for clarification. On page 10, no other change rather than restructuring to make it clearer. And when you start seeing the deletions in this section, this is really something that's associated with the county that we may not be doing, and we've moved on over the years. And plumbing plan check, the fees there. There's residential appliances with three horsepower or less, we're deleting that. And that goes through page 13, 14. And on 14, I just want to note, there are some public works permits that are actually issued or reviewed by planning, and I put that at the bottom of the page 14 to make that clear. So it's in the planning section, but it's really a public works-related fee. And as I described in our last communication on this, we'll be looking at new fees in the future regarding excavation and the issues associated with that, in terms of observation by the local community. And page 15, and moving on to public works. I repeated the, okay, I repeated the public work section in here, I know it's something I need to change. On recreation, we're getting into a significant amount of change here. So what I've added is, on page 20, is Jennifer's detail on that, identifying the groupings, the change in the facilities damage and cleaning deposit, and highlighting proposed fees that make it equitable between all the groups. And what will happen in our final fee schedule is, we most likely will keep it in this setup. It will require a larger revamping of this to accommodate her fee structure, but at this point, we're just going to put it in the back, so it's easier to read. And let's see. I did want to make a comment on a suggestion this last week to have the courtyard as a place to rent. That was reviewed before we submitted this to you. We're going to review it further and look at all the true costs associated with that, with having City Hall open. So I just wanted to, because I know that was on everybody's mind. And let's see. In regards to page 18, this is an area we've left pretty much the same. This is going to be a larger review in the future regarding costs, recouping of costs for staff's time, as well as for equipment. And that's going to take significant analysis of our vehicles, our fleet, and the value of staff's time assisting. And that is the update for the miscellaneous fee schedule fiscal year 14. Would you have any questions?
Staff have any questions about the fee schedule? Counsel? I have one question. Have you created an analysis that determines what monies has been generated by these, by the current fees and then the proposed fee schedules based on these increases?
That's a really good question. The, and I'll be passing out the general fund revenue structure. Some buckets are like miscellaneous buckets. So it's rather hard to pull out one by one how much we've actually, what we've actually received and what it's related to. In the case of planning, you have deposits that sometimes are handled on a spreadsheet environment. So that kind of analysis is going to take a bit of time, and that's what I'm looking forward to in the future, is in doing that detailed analysis, we can actually, we just started creating separate buckets for recreation and planning, we're starting that process. Then we can do further detailed analysis on trends and growth and all of that. So to answer your question, in terms of what this 7.83% means overall to the revenues, at this point, it's difficult to predict, because we don't have the bucket in there to actually review it on an ongoing basis. So, that's the plan.
Well, I recognize that we can, you know, create analysis until paralysis, but when we're trying to make prudent decisions based on the future of the city and where we're providing our services, if we don't have that analysis, it's kind of a, you know, you can raise fees, raise fees, raise fees into perpetuity, but if it's not generating any money, what good is it done? You know?
And that's an excellent comment. It's, that can set up a, we can, financially, once we set up those buckets, and then also identify the critical revenues that we should have, maybe some sort of checklist, whether it's on the development side, or as we get the volumes of revenue from other funds, you know, how those get categorized, and then have a monthly update on each one of those. In terms of, again, I was a bit conservative on the CPI increase, there's all urban wage earners that was actually a bit higher, but because we're in that kind of moving zone of going from one way of looking at the financials to a newer way of looking at financials, I was a bit conservative on that. So what I can do is take a deeper look into the revenue side and see just how much we can predict on the trends for each one. I'm going to pass out in the next part of this council meeting, the general fund structure for revenues, and you'll see what the buckets are, look like. And then the next step in that is to look at the financial system to see if we can create micro buckets underneath. So if you have, because at this point in time, we're running out of code structures. So it's how to be creative within that environment, so we can actually track it. And the other side, of course, is doing it by hand. So, but that's the, you've touched on the big, the big next step.
Right. An example of what I'm talking about is, you know, currently, there's some discussion about how freight is handled to the island. And there's the three purveyors that are bidding on that process. One of the largest expenditures that we have within our city government that we're not tracking and paying attention to is fuel. And when we see our warrants, it's fuel, all departments, how can we do things better? How can we better manage the money that we're spending? And without that analysis and being able to put your finger on, you know, what that gallon of gas is costing us and how we're effectively using that money, it makes it difficult to make the decision when you're negotiating with the freight company, for example. So that analysis would be important.
That's, you, definitely.
Any other questions from council?
Good idea. You can, you can make this, these buckets that she's talking about, you can even have many buckets within the bucket, which will, which will track more carefully where the expenditures are. As you were talking about fuel, for instance, there are certain areas that maybe could save on fuel, but if you put it just for everybody, you don't know exactly where the problems might be. So, I like, I like the structure here. It could be even more micro than it is now. It could grow. So, and it give us a real good handle on where we are, because quite frankly, I don't know where we are. We're structured set, being set up right. We've just got to figure out where the money is.
But you also don't want to get down to the minutia.
Well, no. But if there's an issue, which you want to track something specifically, you can.
As opposed to all departments maybe break down by departments?
Yeah.
And then refine that further?
Right.
General business.
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing. Anyone else in the audience care to comment on our fee schedule? Nobody doing that? This is a public hearing item, so the public hearing is officially open. All right.
Close it.
Close the public hearing. Give everybody a minute? I'm still waking up.
They're flocking down here.
Hey, I've been fishing for a couple days.
Really?
Running out of woodwork. Okay. Shall you go through each fund?
Oh, okay, next, what I'd like to pass out to you, I think I want to start with revenues.
Nice ringtone.
Mayor, before you start on the budget. Yeah, we just brought in some cases if you guys want to read.
We won't have a need for 20 minutes.
It's to eat, I'm just, I'm just.
Okay. It's here. We'll let everybody wind up, wander up there at their leisure as we go through this. How's that?
So we just finished revenues, I wanted to focus on the general fund revenue side before we move to the expenditures.
Here we go, more paper.
Killed another tree. One more tree to dust.
Why you run out of numbers? You got a nine-digit code.
Okay. What I've just distributed is the general fund, historical, these 11 by 17, I should introduce these sheets to you. Revenue side has historical back to 2007, 2008. On the top, it shows a summary of everything that you're going to see below, by a larger bucket. So you'll see kind of the trends that have moved on through the years to the current year budget, and then there's some percentages there to help you differentiate. And then below, it takes that upper summary and details it out. And I wanted to, by looking at the top section, from 2007, 2008 in the general fund, which is Fund 102, that include, that was a $5.5 million revenue, actual received. As we move across, the last actual numbers, fiscal year 11, 6.4 million dollars. You've increased about a million there, almost a million. 2011, 2012, we're still in the estimated world there. Our auditors, as you know, are here reviewing this, and there's going to be some accruals and changes to that. Then the next column is the adopted column. And traditionally, in the budgeting process, you need a base to start with, a base to compare to, and you really, traditionally, use budgets. You don't use prior year information, you just use your budget and you move from there and make adjustments. So if you use the prior year adopted budget, and then I've added an estimated column for 2013, again, that's more estimated than the 2012, it's really preliminary at this point in time. In fact, so much so that in some of these revenue buckets, it'll be exactly the same number as 2012. So I've, where you see highlighted areas on here, this is where I've taken the number and changed it with recent analysis. Then we move to the proposed budget. And as you can see, the trend has moved from 2002 to 2008, from 5.5 million to 7.4 million. Now I want to emphasize that 7.4 million has about $690,000 of one-time revenue from the sale of property at Metropole. Technically, at this point, that's, well, that is a one-time revenue. And as we move down to the taxes section, going to the detail, this is where I've spent considerable amount of time researching. And I've been rather conservative on one hand, but not on another. So I've really looked at a lot of the estimated numbers, and with assistance of the finance department and Betty Jo, made a conclusion that I believe we can raise a transient tax of 3.9 million. There's a possibility we could increase that a little bit more. That's the conservative side. Not much, but a little bit more. So I've highlighted that as being something I need to review. The admissions tax, as you can see, in estimated 2012, it was 500,000, I've placed it at 410 at this point. So there's a possibility that may go up as well. The property tax bucket is highlighted just because there's so much activity in there. We receive property tax in various ways, and we're going to be receiving more property tax via successor agency. That world is just being created right now, and we're going to bring that to you in the next month or so, the whole new successor agency world and how it looks in our financial system. So it's, what I've done below that is I've added a property tax additional line, which is the monies that we may get, that we will get from the dissolution of successor. So that's additional $247,000. And we have received those monies, by the way, those are received, actual dollars. So if we, I can go down each section. Licenses and permits, this is where we've done, you'll see some adjustments related to planning and building fees. We're actually going through a process of what we pay our consultants to review, any kind of development agreement or any kind of SEQA, EIR, is we're matching it to the expenditure side. So whatever revenue we get, we're matching it on the expenditure side in terms of what we pay that consultant. And it can go up or down during the year, and we will probably come back with a January revision to recognize those revenues, but it's a placeholder there. So you're not seeing on the expenditure side a consultant costing more than the revenue that they brought in at this point in time, it's a match. And we've created new buckets as a result of that, so that can be tracked by the planning And I want to invite staff, if there's any, anything you'd like to add as well, feel free. Moving on down to intergovernmental revenue. Any questions on these? These, again, are still estimates at this point. Trying to highlight differences here. Charges for services, this is another area you see a large, new section for fees, this is aligning up with the change in the fee schedule, as well as on the expenditure side for recreation. You're going to see revenue in for the exact amount, you're going to see expenditures out. And I just want to let you know, we, there will be a change during the year on that, because if you end up spending a little bit more money on uniforms, it's going to be an expenditure, but we're going to be getting it back on the revenue. So these are just placeholder buckets, so we can identify trends as the year goes on. And then in the next year's budget, there'll be the confidence to actually say, okay, this is what it's going to be for revenue and expenditure, with, based on trends.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. On the revenues that you're looking at, does that include the expected revenue from the new fees?
It does not include an 8% increase on those fees because of the buckets are difficult to, I'm playing it conservative on the revenue side. There's, there's small budgets.
If we adopt the fees, then you can see a 7%
Correct.
Increase in those revenues, possibly in some of those revenues.
Correct. And then we can come back in January, just to say what, over the microphone, the question that you asked, that the CPI increase is not included in these revenue projections at this time. And what we can do is, if they are realized, then in January, we come back with a revision, we recognize the revenue, and. And as we get down to use of property money, you can see the sale of property after expenses at $691,000. And other revenues, revenues that were not, you can, as you can see, we're anticipating certain revenues not coming in at this point in time, but we can always come back to council once programs are created. In this case, the bike race or any other kind of event that may bring revenue to the And that's an overview of the general fund revenues.
Terribly exciting.
Any questions or comments? No? Okay.
Under taxes, and you may have touched upon this, but I was trying to follow the spreadsheet as we went through this. Property tax, 1484. What is that?
1484, that is the redevelopment, I believe it's a, well, the bucket basically is successor money coming back to the city.
Okay.
So it's successor money. 1484 is referring to the bill. So it's, that'll be going forward in the future. What has not, in terms of revenue, been identified here is any monies we may get from LA County from the 2003 agreement that we have, that we're looking into with them at this point in time, as well as any kind of golden ticket-related monies associated with successor. But we're going to bring that forward to you in the next month or so, the next board meeting, I believe. Agency meeting.
Questions, Ollie?
Looking good.
Ralph, any questions?
Just to let everybody know, the estimated proposed budget is for an income of $7,447,311. So that's where we are, our estimated income. Our budget's $10 million, and we're going to get $7 million income, right? No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah. And then just reiterate again, 7.4 includes a one-time revenue.
Yeah.
So look at it that way, we've still got a little bit of work to do. But it is, the trends are going up, and that's really good news at this time. Okay. And I can, I'd like to stay on the revenue theme just a little bit longer before we move to expenditures.
Okay.
And pass out the harbor fund revenues, and all of that information's over there if interested.
Thanks, so good.
Once your eyes change to expenditures, it's hard to go back to revenue. And again, you'll, once we get into expenditures, we may move back to revenue, because we might have additional questions going back and forth, but I just want to give you a preview of this at this time. The spreadsheet is set up exactly the way the general fund is, with a summary at top. And, but I'm going to move from the summary, let's see, actually, the summary is 4.7 in 2008 to about 4.4 in 2014, and I'll get into that just a little bit. In terms of the detail, and I'm going to really just stay with the warfage fee, the channel fees at this time. Traditionally, what is done is we take a portion of that percentage and we apply it to this fund, or that fee, we apply it to this fund, 75%, and if you turn the page to the next fund, we apply 25% to the harbor fund, the infrastructure fund. And in this particular case, what has happened over time is, it appears that in this last fiscal year budget, 200,000 was budgeted for as warfage fees in this main fund. And what we've noticed is that we've had to reduce that down to the 75% level. You traditionally get $2 million. So we've reduced it down to 1.6, which is, it has fluctuated, fluctuated over time. It was 1.9 in 2011, again, that's estimated, it may need to be adjusted. But it has gone up over time, but traditionally, it's just been 2 million. So we adjusted it in this new budget to put the 1.6 in this fund and an additional 400,000 in the following fund. And what that's kind of created is a $400,000 to $500,000 structural deficit. When you see this next, when we go into the expenditure side, it'll come out to more like a $700,000 structural deficit in that fund because of expenditures. So this will be one of the bigger questions that we're asking, is how do we kind of get rid of that structural side?
Well, what is, what's justification of having that fund broken up?
The fund, it, one is admin, so it's operations, and the next is infrastructure. So you can, you have infrastructure, I should preface this because I think it's morphed over time. I think sometimes you'll see operations in an infrastructure fund. But traditionally, infrastructure is just for capital improvements. It's what it takes to fix the pier, what it takes to deal with your capital-related versus your staffing. So traditionally, that's the difference between two of the funds. So you want to create a savings account, so 25% is put in your savings account, 75% in your operating account. And you do, there is some, when we look at fund balance, well, when we discuss the nature of fund balance, we'll get into that a little bit more. But that was the logic behind splitting the 75 to 25%. And this last was reviewed, I believe, about a month ago. I recently received some new projections, and those will be applied in this coming week to see if that adjusts this anymore.
Are they good or bad?
You know, I'll be positive, I'm always positive. They looked a little bit lower, but at first blush, but there could be hidden details in that. And this does include the increasing mooring fees as well. And this does include the increasing mooring fees as well. So that, unless you have any further questions on how this is structured or set up, we can always come back to it when we look at the expenditure side.
Remind me what the harvest, harbor service charge general is?
General, I believe that's leases. I'm sorry?
Daily mooring fees.
Daily mooring fees, there you go.
So they're going down 100 grand?
Let's see.
96,915.
What line is that?
It's...
It's 103, 25, 85, 45. So one, two, three, four up from the bottom.
And it's, it's going down from an adopted budget figure, last year's adopted budget figure, so it's, the prior year trends, it looks like it's, it's about the same if we go off of, it's a little bit higher than fiscal year 11.
But we raised the fees.
Sorry?
We raised the fees.
Yes. And I put that under, yes, did I put that right one? Okay.
Just look at it, because it's going the wrong way.
I had that under mooring permits, I believe I put that increase there. It may, it may need to be distributed elsewhere as well. So we'll take a look at that.
Even if he did put it in the wrong bucket, it doesn't wash?
It, it's, well, it's going to wash, and then it's going to be the total amount, but his projection, I believe, was 130,000 increase. So it'll, but we'll take an extra special look at the harbor services charges as well. We'll get the detail to you, and it's detailed out by projected use.
While we go through this process, and I don't know if now is the, is a good time to bring this up, but with the changes that have taken place in the courthouse, there's a variety of fines and penalties, and possible revenue items that happen within the harbor. Perfect example is a 72-hour dinghy dock violation. If we can put our hands around how we can collect that money...
Yeah, we're working on a whole list of them, citywide. Thank you, ma'am. And that's getting 100% of that revenue.
That's right, and that may generate more than your CPI change.
Definitely. And that's more buckets, that's good.
More buckets. Oh my gosh.
That's good.
Counties live for buckets. They collect them. Are you good?
I'm good.
How you doing over there, Ralph?
Well, there's a lot of data here.
Yeah.
I'm blown away. It's really good. I don't like the way the numbers are going. It seemed to keep going up, and up, and up, and up, and up. That's typical government, though.
And on these harbor fees, we can also, we can give you the detail to all these revenues as well, but Brian has significant amount of detail he keeps. Okay, that's harbor. And then the next group of revenues, this will be the last group, is just the sewer. I'd like you to become acquainted with the sewer fund just a little bit. It isn't as detailed as this, because it's just one revenue, but...
Somehow, I kind of had a good, strong suspicion we'd be talking about sewer.
And I'm going to briefly go into a bit of a budget introduction. I'll do this right now, and then I'll do it again one more time on other funds. The sewer fund is a proprietary fund, and there are different funds in government. There's a governmental fund, which is the general fund, which you can spend the money on anything. And then there's proprietary funds, which kind of acts like a business. So it's, you're, you're charging for a service. And those revenues traditionally are restricted, so they can't really be spent on anything else. In this case, sewer fund is just for sewer, saltwater's for saltwater, and refuse is for refuse.
And harbor's for harbor.
And harbor can be a little, there might be a little, there are degrees.
Degrees.
But, but you're absolutely right, you're charging for a fee, it should go to that particular fund. But there are degrees within proprietary. And so the sewer fund is rather simple compared to the other funds. It is, the way it's been structured over time is into four various funds, and what you might see over the next, when we come forward with RBF's new budget and everything else, is a restructuring of these funds to be in line with that plan. So what you're seeing right here, on the revenue side, is a splitting out, in a way, of what we get from the property taxes for sewer. So there's a certain percentage, 70% goes into this particular fund, 107, which handles operations. So you'll see the ES contract there when we look at the expenditure side. And what I've done, I guess the larger reason why I wanted you to see the revenues is, I've budgeted revenues to the penny when it comes to what our tax rules are. When I looked at the history, it doesn't quite come out that way, and it's either delayed in tax and penalties and all of that. But we are going through a shift in how we present that information to the county. We're going to be reviewing the status of certain units, you know, how many rooms, all of that. So there may be a process, there will be a process that we're going through, that will delay some of this revenue coming forward, because we're going to do it separately from working with the county. We're going to do it individually by homeowner, to indicate, this is, we identify your property as being X, and this is what it is on a tax rule, there's an incongruency here, here's the difference. So that's going to shift us a little bit in this coming fund, since we're doing a lot of relooking at the data. And, so the revenues may be coming a little slower than normal. So, but I just want to let you know that I've budgeted to the penny on the projection. And, and as you can see, it's really simple, just wait till we get to the expenditure side. And you have an administration fund. This is an interesting combination of city staff and, and other capital expenditures here as well. Again, I believe this one will be doing a lot of restructuring over the next few months. So it's easier for us to look at RBF, but as well as environs' budget. And then we have the wastewater treatment plant. Just like I said earlier on the harbor fund, we put a percentage, about, I believe, 10%, 20 to 10% into the wastewater treatment plant as a reserve for replacement. And that's an essential part to keep that going. And what you'll see on the expenditure side, and all funds, is that that's going to be deteriorating, that reserve fund balance, over time, possibly even this year. So...
So does that mean that that's, that percentage is, is sufficient?
You know, the percentage is sufficient, I think it's looking at where we're getting the revenues from. And that's why we're doing the review of, on the revenue side. So the percentage has worked over time, you do have reserves in those funds. But just like in saving for a new car, if you're using that savings account, and the time comes to purchase a new car, the funds aren't there. So we just, you have to look at the whole picture, like you've talked about before, which is, how are we structuring the revenues? And what you're going to see on the expenditure side, is I'm recommending a rate analysis study, to see how we can structure this, in a way that's equitable, and, and in terms of your community, how your community is set up, every city is different. So that 70-20-10 may still work with that revenue structure. So when we bring in RBF and the capital improvement plan, we'll definitely know the work we have cut out for us on that area. And, and like, I'll be repeating myself a couple of times, we're looking for grant money as well, from clean beaches and the feds, to assist us on that as well, so it isn't such a burden on the rates.
Well, my interest and concern in that, in the statement that I made, is, is that historically, redevelopment money has been allocated to a lot of these infrastructure things. And, not as it relates to the sewer fund, but the saltwater fund is an example. Staff came before council and said, hey, hello, we need to raise our fees a little bit, so that we can generate enough money to fix the things we need to fix, because the bucket's empty. And the council says, well, we're not going to raise the fees, at least that was the vote. That becomes critical, if we want to continue to provide service. Okay?
Yes.
Dependable service. Right. We've got a holiday weekend coming up, I, I forecast a saltwater break, don't you?
Don't.
Okay.
He put it out there.
It'll happen.
Don't even say it, thank God.
It was saltwater, 4th of July.
We can move on, if you like.
On that note?
On that note, all ready? And what I'll do is I'll describe what I've handed out to you. I handed out to you a stapled packet with some detail sheets, and this helps you to, it's, some of it's kind of self-explanatory, but it's, it details out what the line item descriptions include. So if you want to have that next to you, it might help you out, I'll be, we'll be walking through that as well. And then I handed out a budget study session documents description page. And if you turn that page to description of funds, I'll briefly go over that, and in terms of how your city structure budgetarily looks like. This will take just a few moments. You have a general fund, which is Fund 102, and this includes public safety, recreation, public works, and community promotion, and fire. This fund is, doesn't, as, as I just described it, it doesn't include the clerk of the council, finance, and other overhead-related items. That is included in Fund 101, which I'll describe, I'll get into at the end. Other governmental funds are your city infrastructure fund, which traditionally, over time, has become kind of a grant fund. We've included toxic waste, which we're going to move from that fund into an insurance fund in the next budget. Traffic safety fund, this is related to code enforcement. Prop A fund, that's going to be dying out over time, I believe we only have a few dollars left in that. The storm drain replacement fund, the reason why it's called a governmental fund, which means it kind of leans on the general fund, is it doesn't have a pure source of revenue. It just gets any access the general fund has, and that's an area that we're going to highlight as being one that needs to be upgraded at this point. So we're going to be, not necessarily right now, but looking at how we get, and get revenues to that storm drain fund. Rydell Cemetery Trust Fund is a small trust fund for the cemetery.
You skipped one of those.
Excuse me. Emergency relief fund, yes. And this has moved to the community, my understanding of the history of this, is over time, it was a program the city had for emergency donations. And over time, it has moved to the community in, in terms of fundraising. And, so this is something that we won't necessarily include in the budget, but I've put it here, right, for you. City redevelopment reimbursement fund, this fund is in place as we work on the transition with successor agency. We're going to be charging, at this point, city staff time that would normally go to the redevelopment agency, and as a holding area. And what you'll see in the next page is, we've overbudgeted in that. And we're going to determine if we're going to pull that back, or if we're going to wait to see what further revenues we get from successor. That's going to, that's a key point to look at. The Avalon Municipal Hospital gets a half-cent sales tax directly through us to the hospital. The key question there is, how do we reimburse our costs for providing this particular service that we have for them? We're going to be doing some research in the future on the rural communities that act associated with that, because at this point in time, that fund is in a deficit mode, because we charge overhead to it. So that's one area, another area that we're going to look into, in terms of how do we get overhead, and should we get overhead? And so that'll be a question that we'll be bringing forward, probably not in the budget process necessarily, but somewhere along the way. Just looking at other models in other cities, and how they work that way. And it's purely...
Have you had that conversation with the hospital?
No, it's, because it's just a glimpse at this point in time. I'm assuming there's got to be other models, so I want to do some research on that. But my understanding is, historically, any charges have been removed, but we still show them on our books as being charges that aren't recovered. And it has grown over time. So the question is whether we write that off, and start a whole new relationship, in terms of how we handle that, either we don't charge for overhead, or we chose, or we charge appropriately for overhead. So that's just something to bring up, I haven't at all spoken to the, to the hospital.
I think they're getting reimbursed for the overhead, because they include in their cost, so the feds are paying them, they're just not paying us.
Well, okay, good to know. Definitely look into that.
You know, when we passed that half, half percent increase for the hospital, that was way before the new reimbursement started, which brought our hospital, basically, break even. So we should have more money than we need. Or is that, is that increase added as income to the hospital, and, and possibly taking that and adding that in, and the reimbursement we get from HS, whatever, is less? Or maybe could that, that increase be moved somewhere else? But it was voted on by the, by the folks, and it was to supplement the income that the hospital needed to stay afloat. It's a different story right now, you might look at that.
Definitely, definitely, thank you.
Well, at this point, they're healthy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we need to have that conversation.
There might be some trade-offs in there somewhere.
Yeah.
And then we've got the McLean-Putnam Trust Fund, and this is used for fire-related expenditures, again, nominal funds that are there. Special revenue funds, and again, these are different from the governmental funds, you can kind of spend those a little, the way you'd like to. Special revenue funds are traditionally grant-related, and they're highly restricted, and you want to account for them separately. And this includes your gas tax fund, CDBG fund, and the MTA fund. Proprietary funds, again, there's a, there's a, they're business-like funds that receive revenues as a result of providing a service. It's harbor, sewer, saltwater, fuel dock. General administration fund, and this is when we get into what are called internal service funds, these funds charge out to other funds, and this will be a big part of what we look at here today. They're kind of overhead funds. That, we do, we charge out to other funds through, for the services of the city manager, clerk, HR, risk management, IT, once we get the IT department going. And then insurance fund as well, we charge out to departments for liability insurance and compensation, workers' comp, and any legal expenses. And then the vehicle replacement fund, we charge out for that. And just a note on vehicle replacement, that is an area that we, we're going to have to look into as well, in terms of reestablishing that fund, and identifying the replacement schedule. So there's a, a negative work to do there as well. Right now, we're a pay-as-you-go, there are some funds available, but they've been depleted.
In the last three, four years, we stopped putting money in.
You stopped putting money in it, right?
No, we took money out.
Well, well, that became the, the little placeholder to balance budgets. You know, it was easy to stop funding this bucket, because we need to spend the money elsewhere, and that's kind of like, like not the best business practice. Vehicles wear out.
Yes. And now, turning the page, this is the overview, and we've looked at revenues, so you've got a sense of that. And now, it's how do we marry the revenues with the expenditures and your savings accounts from prior years? So what I've done is, set up all of these funds by their types, identified if we Identified if we ignore the estimated beginning balance column and move to the revenue. This is revenue in for the current fiscal year for each fund. Transfer in or transfers in from other funds, and it should match the total on the transfer out column for total sources. And when you look at the total sources column, it actually totals the transfers in and revenue. Now, talking about the estimated beginning balance, as I've communicated in the past, we're still a work in progress in identifying what funds we have per fund. We know overall the city cash, what that looks like, but by fund, we're basically confident about year-end '11. As we're working on year-end '12 as we speak, I would say a couple more weeks we'll be able to identify what cash is by fund in terms of fiscal year '12. And my goal is October, I won't give a date, sooner hopefully for fiscal year '13, so we have a solidified number by fund. At that point in time, our goal is to come back to you and modify the adopted budget at that point in time with these estimated fund balances. So what I've done is I've taken... Moving... I'll move over to operating expenditure. These operating expenditures you see here in this particular column are detailed in the backup that I presented, and then the total uses, and then the ending balance column. In the ending balance column, you see two positives here, which are in those sewer savings accounts that I was describing. So those two funds have a surplus coming in at this point in time above what we've budgeted for that particular purpose in those particular funds, if it's the wastewater treatment plant. Now, if we go back to the estimated beginning balance, these are the funds we need from our savings account to operate with our current expenditures. So it's a total of $2.3 million. It's spread out between all the various funds. So we need to pull from our savings account $148,000 in the general fund at this time. City... General funds are really general fund-related. If they can't carry their weight, we have to pull from the general fund savings account to assist those. And as I mentioned earlier, we've got the redevelopment reimbursement fund there at $302,000, which we're going to... We're looking forward to getting a positive legal opinion in the future when we look into that. Special Revenue Funds. The CDBG Fund, that's actually monies that is allocated to CDBG. That's a good, clear number, what we need to do meals on wheels and other programs in CDBG. Proprietary Fund, the $712,000, that's highlighting that structural deficit from the revenue, about $400,000 as well as additional expenditures. And that's what we're pulling from a savings account there. The sewer fund, $579,000, that we have to pull for the operations account. Now, of course, if we add in, if I make a transfer from the other two healthier funds to the operations funds, it isn't that high of a number. And as I... Let's see. Saltwater, $32,000. Saltwater Infrastructure, $376,000. And this gets back to what we said earlier, that the saltwater fund is... Doesn't... We're going... That's what I'm really looking forward to seeing in October, is how saltwater fund is doing. That's key. If that... If we need to draw extra money, that'll have to come from the general fund. It can't come from the sewer fund unless we find some kind of nexus. And it's got to be approved, since it's a Prop 218 fund, how it's related and how it may impact the sewer fund if that... If something happens there. So at this point in time, this is the minimum amount that we'll need to move forward. There are going to be additional adjustments. I can let you know that, but minimal at this point in time. So this is the overall financial picture for the city. This does not include additional capital improvements. It doesn't include any kind of, like I said, looking in the future, putting money away for replacement of buildings, cars, infrastructure on any other level. So it's... Those are all areas that we need to work towards completing, creating those financial management plans.
So to put it simply, we bring in $0.90 and spend it a dollar.
If we're lucky.
Not very sustainable.
Correct.
Doesn't work too much, too well.
And just to piggyback on that, we are looking for grant funds in those critical areas that we need to in terms of sewer to assist us. And we'll be coming forward with that in the future, crossing our fingers.
Thank you, Sacramento. You really did a number on us.
Well, they're not all responsible for this. They're not responsible for all of this.
With ACIA, we were able to fill the holes. No more.
You can't fill the holes in the harbor. You can fill the holes in the saltwater sewer.
Sewer Infrastructure Fund and the wastewater treatment fund, beginning balance, are those effectively zero or it just hasn't been determined yet?
It hasn't been determined. So on one level, I didn't want to predict any excess funds at this point in time. These are just the funds you needed to sustain the existing budget. So there are funds available in the sewer infrastructure fund and the wastewater treatment plan fund. I just don't have them exact yet.
Right.
I'm hoping in October we'll get it, if not sooner.
So the total fund column at the bottom, that number is accurate or not?
The total... I'm sorry, which column?
Estimated Beginning Funds, the $2,372?
Yes. That will adjust slightly as we make some minor adjustments, but yes. That'll be... You do have those funds in the bank, because I know the total cash for the city, but it's a matter of which... I feel comfortable that you have those funds in that particular fund area. The only one I'm not super comfortable about is saltwater. So it's... That's the one I'm not comfortable with saying that you have those funds from prior year. We may have to pull that from the general fund savings account, fund balance.
Okay. Questions? Everybody in the audience good?
And just to reiterate on this, we are working on, and we will be working on, deficit reduction ideas as well as revenue ideas. And we've discussed this in the past. So the big key is, even though we may have cash overall, the most important part is cash by fund. And we can't overspend in one fund without pulling from another, but it has to be from a general fund balance to be able to do that. So I'm confident in saying your special revenue funds are clean. You haven't overspent grants and gone into... That's all fine. It's just those other ones that traditionally we've been... We're aware of, the sewer fund.
Gina?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on the harbor fund support services? The paramedic contract is $705,000, $712,000 hole. Is there a reason why the whole paramedic contract comes through?
The question asked by Brian Bray, our harbor master, is why the paramedic contract at $700,000 is coming from his harbor fund and his budget is in deficit by $700,000. And that is something that I think we have to look at overall.
Look at dispersing it through different funds.
Yes.
Needs to be shared by the whole.
I don't know historically if it was always.
Well, historically, it was a lot less than $700,000. I know that. And it has increased significantly over the years, and I believe there's a...
And one of the things that's happened is that the contract has increased significantly over the years. So, you know, what was almost in perpetuity forever, it was $500,000. And Don Conabi has a couple of times waived the increase. And with the position that the county is in today, he probably is not going to continue to do that. So one of the things we need to do, or have needed to do for a while, is to sit down with the accounting and renegotiate that, because at some point in time, you lose value. You know, once that contract gets north of $700,000, it becomes an economic thing. Do we provide our own? Do we contract out? Yeah, we need to analyze that and sit down with the county players ASAP and get that number back south of 500.
Definitely a contract review. Because I believe it's a long-term contract as well. So it's always good to go back and revisit and see if it still works for us.
Good point, Brian. Staff have any other questions or...
Would you have the option to go back and reconsider the sewer saltwater? I mean, is that a once-a-year opportunity?
It should be an annual opportunity, I would think.
But it is once a year because of property tax.
And that's another area I'm recommending, a rate analysis as well, and to see how do we charge for that.
Randomly.
Is there any additional questions on the sources and uses?
No.
Okay. And we'll move on to... It's about an hour and 10 minutes, I believe. We have about 45 minutes to go, 50 minutes. So let me know what your energy level is if you need a cookie or a bagel, I think it is, or orange juice. So the next section is... Are the expenditures. And we can go rather quickly through the top, but I... If you could leave available, turn to either your total uses, sources, or the explanation or description of funds as we go through this. And then have this on the side if you want to turn to it at all. This may be just for your viewing later. Now, to describe this spreadsheet, this is a little different from the revenue spreadsheet. You'd still have the summary up top, and you have historical data and information, but I've broken down the actual budget process here. So you'll have the estimated adopted 2013 budget, which, like I said earlier, is your... It's your foundation. And what we've done with that foundation, we've done quite a bit of analysis, discussion, review. We redid payroll projections. We did a lot of things to see what the ground really looked like. And so we came up with what's called a base change, what the ground looked like for fiscal year '14. The base change column, and that's just your fundamental changes. This could be adjustments in salary. It could be adjustments in where we're allocating people. It could potentially be a change in... I want to say utilities. You may see that in a different column as well, if we didn't budget fully for utilities in the past. So that's a base change column. And then you have an ongoing column, and these are traditionally requests from staff. They want to increase a program or change a program. Or it could be utilities, depending on how large the dollar amount was that was not budgeted in the past. I just wanted to make it clear so you can see what fundamentally changed as a result of maybe health insurance rates going up over time. That's in the base change column. And then ongoing is what we see going on in the future. It doesn't mean it won't change. It doesn't mean you can't make decisions to... One example was given to brown out Joe Machado. You know, you can make that... That's a decision you can make, and that ongoing column can change. But that's if you turn off the water there. But you'll see examples like that where, because we've got a program that's ramped up over the last year or so, we didn't have the budget there to sustain over this period of time the utilities for that program. But we've changed that in this budget. And then one time, just purely that one time, traditionally, maybe a one-time contract or a one-time expenditure, capital expenditure, for a total proposed budget. And that's the theme that we'll be looking at through all these pages, if we make it through all these pages. So the first one is rather simple. It's city council. And if you were to look on the one page here, it actually shows the staff that's charged there. And this kind of minor change of $208 in the base change column, and we've added additional monies for membership and dues and travel. I envision Denise envisions possibly going to Sacramento and lobbying for money. And this could either be charged here or it could be charged to the appropriate fund in the case sewer.
And now's an appropriate time to mention that this special meeting, that this body did not get paid any additional funds for being here, right Denise?
So that's... We can turn the page if you don't have any questions on that.
We are getting paid for this. This is the city council meeting.
Not getting paid any additional.
No, no.
And I neglected to describe Fund 101 for you. Fund 101 is an internal service fund. These charges, these expenditures, all get charged out to all the other funds, harbor, all the other funds that are out there, as well as the general fund. So this is the treasurer. It's a minimal budget as well, a slight change in a benefit structure there, again, based on rate changes and such. And that's... We can turn the page if you'd like. And just stop me if you have questions.
What's the meaning of life?
I've been working on that. City Attorney. This is... The city attorney is a contracted service that also applies to other funds as well. So you'll see... This is just general city attorney services. The city attorney is going to be budgeted in the sewer fund, the harbor fund, and elsewhere. You'll see a line item called city attorney. And in this particular budget, I've moved monies from what's called special projects to the retainer line item. And that's to help us kind of work with the bill structure that we get, because normally it isn't detailed out as special projects. So at this point in time, we're just putting it in one bucket, and then we'll detail out later if we need to. But we've worked closely with the city attorney to identify all the projects that are existing and where those monies needed to be budgeted, so it doesn't necessarily hit your 101 fund.
Well, at least it's not as bad as 910.
And if you're good with that page, we can turn that. Wait, I'll watch you all turn the page. And then General Administration Fund. This is... What you'll see here are the budgeting for the elections for $35,000 this next year. And we've also added increases in membership and dues, training and travel, and city manager travel. This is, from my perspective, a conservative increase in travel. I would... I recommend more travel for staff and conferences. And that's just my personal recommendation. But this is a start.
The elections is a little bit higher because we always shoot higher in case we need the counter help.
Okay. And moving on to finance. And I should let you know that unlike the revenue side, the estimated column for 2013 is, I would say, 75% good. You know, we're still going to have a little bit of accrual going on there. So it's more of an actual number than the revenue side was. So on the finance side, what you'll see here is the... We're increasing our financial system software contract. It is going up, increased this last year. We're adding additional membership and dues for staff overall, for line staff. And training and travel has remained the same. There hasn't been much training and travel because we've actually... Staff, finance staff has been here quite a bit. So we're looking forward to that being spent in the future. And then moving down to professional services general. This is... This includes several things. It includes a proposed budget for financial consulting for this next year, which includes Platinum, LGS, and a portion for a plan going forward, once we look at the deficit overall, how to... a plan going forward, once we look at the deficit overall, how to address that. And it also includes about $30,000 for Whitman, it's paid for this account. And various miscellaneous items totaling $5,000 or so. That is one of the larger requests in the budget for the 101 fund. And the 101 fund continues with general government. This particular fund also has, we budget for retiree benefits here, some retiree benefits for $45,000, so that looks a little bit unusual on that particular line. As we've gone through, you'll see, when we go, identify ongoing, the $2,000, it's because we've identified trends in prior year. We're not going to, I have to say Betty Jo is very conservative. Even if she sees over expenditures in the prior year related to budget, she doesn't want to increase it, so. We've increased just enough, because I think a budget should be a clear indication of what you're spending, but if we can pull back, and I think that's exactly what Betty Jo was talking about, pull back on expenditures and be really mindful, especially with the detail that we're getting out from our financial system going forward, we'll be able to assist staff on monitoring their expenditures. And I think if we could, look at the one-time column, the $25,000 there actually is to kind of the seed money for something we've talked about in the past, which is looking at having an assessment of salaries, assessment of exactly what each individual is doing related to their title. And how that works within an organization is, once that's identified, then you can look at how we charge, and this is getting to the conversation about Fund 101 and the overhead. How we charge that to the other funds. And technically, that's, should be a federal formula of some sort, or some kind of cost allocation plan. And the only way you can really get an actively working allocation plan is to know what your employees do on a daily basis, their title and their rate of pay, and if they're in the right bucket. So once that analysis is done, we can do a cost allocation plan. Another consultant comes in, takes a look at it, and says, interviews you, and says, so how much time do you spend on a council agenda, related to, just say, the fire department? Then that is reviewed, and the cost allocation is then charged based on that, to the fire department. So you take that from every single thing you do, it's a long process, it can be expensive. We put $25,000, it may be a little bit more than that. Once that's done, then you look at your fees, and you can take how you've now put, identified everybody's status, and then see how it applies to your fee schedule. How much time are you spending with this, and it's actually a beautiful calculation, you can see it to the penny by the person, the hour. There's something called burdened rate, so it's the person's hourly rate or amount plus their benefits. So that's called a burden rate, and you see that in the backup for the fees. So it's really, this is really a foundational budget as a whole, really baby steps towards creating that foundation to move forward, so you have the documents related to that. So that's my long speech on $25,000, which may be a little bit more than 25, but we're being conservative there. You have any questions on general government? Now, that was the end of Fund 101, the Internal Service Fund, and that's 1.6 million. And that 1.6 million will be charged out to all, to the funds that are able to be charged to. And now we're moving to Fund 102, which is your general fund. And this is your law enforcement page, this is the sheriff's contract. There have been a few reductions here based on prior year trends. There's additional night staff, there hasn't been an expenditure there in several years for $20,000, so we did remove it. And let's see, and we did reduce a special department expense. The purpose of that, I believe, is for the city manager to use those funds related to any kind of training, programming associated with law enforcement. So at this point in time, we've reduced that to $2,000, based on prior year trends as well. And sheriff's assistance has also been reduced based on trends. And this doesn't mean that we can't come back to council and request additional funds, but we just wanted to identify those trends that we saw and reduce accordingly.
What was COLA?
COLA for the-
Last year? Last year, because we got the contract going up 1%.
So the COLA for the, for the sheriff's budget?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look that up. It was, it was a minor amount.
Okay.
No, not on this, not on this page, this is just sheriff. This is the beginning of charging out the Fund 101. It's actually general insurance and admin overhead, if you look at the detail right below the top. Under salaries and benefits, that's where we put our overhead charge. So that's the law enforcement's portion of what overhead looks like. So we take the 101 fund that we just presented, and we allocate it out to all the applicable funds that we can.
Right. So we're charging ourselves $96,000 in admin and overhead to oversee the law enforcement contract?
Yes, of the, all the expenditures related to the 101 fund, so that's, again, like I mentioned before, the way it's, it works traditionally is council time to, to present an item related to safety, anything related to communication, just time overall. It could be related, also, you'll see it in the sewer fund, how much of staff time is dedicated to sewer.
I guess what I'm confused is, this is, this fund pays for our sheriff's contract.
Correct, correct.
So we're charging ourselves in budget for us to oversee their contract?
Yes, it's allocated as a part of a public safety, as part of public safety, yes.
101 doesn't have any revenue, so you got to balance it, so you allocate it out. You send, you spend a dollar on 101, you got to put it other places to get it to balance, and so they're putting $175,000 here out of-
So there's, just one more question I can add here, so there's 96, there's 122, well, that's the budget. There's $117,000 in salaries, city salaries, that are in this fund, that are not reflected in other departmental budgets.
Well, this $117,000 is a portion of the 101 fund.
That's what I mean.
Or the one, excuse me, the $18,000.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
So other funds where their salaries are $117,000 less because we've allocated it to this budget?
No, well, we'll chat about it after, I'll, I'll describe, I'll tell you what an internal service fund's about. I think I know what you're describing, and, and just a little thing, it's, even though you have a contract, this is a large contract, and there still needs to be management of it, so there's a cost for that. And that's what this is about, and a part of the cost allocation plan recommendation is to really get a, an idea of what that's about. So it's, okay. And you will see that throughout the Fund 101, or 102, so it'll be increasing, and that's why I spend a lot of time on Fund 101, because it is in all the budgets. In 102. So the next one is fire and ambulance.
You want to skip over that one in case Mike has a question?
Sure. Oh, Mike's on.
It's a good time to cut it, he's not here.
Do you want to skip over it? Or we can come back, by the way.
Let's come back to that one.
Come back.
There's no going back.
Just put it off to the side. Don't work.
And we'll move on to public works. And you'll see public works in several areas, and overall, there's a portion in harbor, there's a portion in sewer. And this is a general fund-related public works. And what we have here is a request for additional lawn mowers, jackhammers, and a power auger. A new tree amount, increasing tree trimming amount for $3,000. And additional cemetery supplies. Let's see, actually, additional gardening supplies for $2,000, and these are the ongoing column. This is where I need my ruler. Yes, and it appears, in terms of clothing allowance, it wasn't budgeted in this one before, and so we were budgeting it here. And the utilities for cemeteries has gone up, as you can see, it was $46,000 estimated for 2013. So we're not quite putting it to 15, to 46,000, we're putting it to 40,000. And, and just a small conversation about utilities. There's a lot of good work ahead of us in terms of setting up a program to identify how we're spending in the utilities area, our meter system, everything, and just creating an inventory on that to double check how we're being charged. Because that's one of the areas in most city government that, over time, once you set up an account, it gets, it just gets paid on a monthly basis, and isn't really reviewed, and I've seen in several instances where something's been turned off, and the utility company was unaware of it, we were unaware of it, and we were paying for it. So that's a whole other analysis, that there's an opportunity there to, to see if there's some cost savings.
And the part-time salaries?
Yes. And that wasn't budgeted in the prior year budget in several funds. So we are now budgeting for that, do you want to know who is the part-time salaries?
No.
Yes, it's part-time salary.
Would it be, because, would it be difficult to pull a manpower by department? Yes.
No, 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 it isn't, no, it isn't, it isn't difficult, no. We have that. Okay, and-
We have a $20,000 in there for capital improvement of the cemetery, because we've been expanding it.
Oh, yes.
We're going to get to the point where, if you want to be in our cemetery, you need to be cremated, there's not going to be more land.
Okay, we're going to start double stacking them?
Well, we used to sell double deaves, except in the newer section that we have right now, they've hit bedrock, the first one out, and we already sold six in that area. It was almost impossible, and so now we're only selling single deaves, so we are promoting family plots where a full burial and then you could put up to five remains on top of it.
That might be too much information.
Okay. Good with public works? And, and I just want to reiterate, I can sit with you individually on these as well, if you have any questions, so. Planning and building engineering, Amanda? So we've got, this was actually one of the fun budgets to work on, like I said, in the revenue side, we created buckets that match up with our contractor relationship, so there's a, and that can, if we get more revenue or more expenditures that are indicated here, then we'll come back with a revision. But this aligns up so that Amanda can see what she's spending, and then what revenue she's getting. And we do, I just want to, let's see, write a copy or... General fund, plan update, I just want to emphasize there that that additional monies, any additional monies that are related to the successor agency will be pulled from this budget and placed in the successor agency budget. And, and the only question here is if the muni code update is related to that, if that's something we can add. And then we've also included $5,000 for benchmarks for floodplain management. And that, I believe that assists the engineers to see where the city lines are, property lines are, and over time, they've been covered over, story sealed, or, and they need to be in place to assist with development, and that-
Yeah, over the years, we've lost all, all of our seminar line benchmarks. So when people want to get floodplain certificates for their class, they're almost no benchmark when they grow up.
And in the future, when we do do improvements, her plan is to include adding the benchmarks each time there's an improvement. So it's a part of the contract.
And our loss of those benchmarks were a result of paving and-
Repairs, trimming, and, and reset, whatever it feels like, and just over the years, we're almost going to be lost.
Do you have any other comments? Okay. So we'll move on from planning to community promotion. And this is the chamber budget, it is a percentage of your TOT. And what I have done here in terms of, let's see, where am I, where am I again? Is, since we are projecting 3.9 million on the general fund side for TOT, it also translates to an increase for the chamber, to $858,000. Of course, if we don't get the 3.9, that doesn't go out, but it is a, it is, it is growing as a result of TOT growing. And I just want to also indicate the grand prix expense of $80,000. That is the only expense related to the grand prix in the budget. And that's related to the, the legal side, the permits and all of that that we're going through currently.
Except we take the projected payment we're going to make to the chamber, divide it by 12, send them a check every month, and then do the final accounting to the end of the year. And so theoretically, if we don't hit the 3.9, they may not have the money to give back.
You know, that is something to look into, because I, I know we do a true-up, since it's been growing over time. And in terms of this revenue forecasting 3.9 million, we'll definitely look at that as we go forward and see how we'd send that money. We can look at it from a monthly basis, what we're getting, take that percentage from that, and go forward. I believe the year-end has to do with the accrual process. If we get revenue in July and August, it's really for June, that's the true-up that she does. And I do believe there, there's going to have to be a correction on the prior year amount because of the situation we've been in with the lack of financial information. So it's, as well as an issue with the financial system on a, one of the revenue codings that we had. So it's, it's, it's like if it was going to hiccup, it hiccuped right when it did hiccup.
Perfect storm.
Yes, perfect storm. So, but not to, I'll, I'll review that again in terms of how we process that with this growing revenue stream. Make sure that doesn't happen. So that's all we have in community promotion at this time.
The print's getting smaller.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. And Jen's sitting in the back of the room, I have no idea why.
Thanks, Jen.
Young eyes, you've got young eyes over there than they have us up here.
And, and really the overall, let's see. We have a small tools request, and this is for the Joe Machado, which will assist Carl in that area. And there's a thought process there that getting the tools will also reduce expenditures elsewhere. And as I slide down here. And this is where I brought up the example of Joe Machado field, and I apologize to Jen for that, but that's, it's a, it's a good one. The utilities were 61,000 that particular year. Some of it could be because it's a brand-new field, others, we've got to monitor how that water's being used and, and possibly regulate that a little bit. But the goal here is to, of course, keep the grass green, but at the same time, save water too. So it's, we've put the, the, an increased ongoing amount of 22,000. It doesn't match the 61, we're being conservative there. This is another area we just need to investigate a little closer in terms of leakage.
As it relates to water?
As it relates to water, yes. And we've added some line items for ongoing of the island company. Let us know they'll be charging us property taxes on certain areas that they hadn't been in the past. And they are charging us for Tremont Hall, Field of Dreams, and the Machine Gun Park. I can, I can forward that memo to you if you'd like.
Do we know what they're going to charge us?
Yes, it's 1750 a year. And it's small print, so I'll read it to you. 1750 for Tremont Hall, 5,988 for Field of Dreams, and 1538 for Machine Gun Park. Right, and $60 for Riley's Pond.
But part of the golf course maintenance shed is on city property.
We'll charge a rent for that.
So we should be able to still float some Field of Dreams for a pay-out.
I'm sorry, we maintain it, it's their property, we maintain it. And then they're going to charge us property tax for it.
That's not unheard of.
They do that to all their properties.
We're currently paying, I believe, for the warehouse property tax.
Well, they're not charging us property tax for Field of Dreams.
Yes.
Yes, they are. They're going to.
And I'll reprint this so it's easy to read.
What do you mean?
So if we do that property swap, we've got to make sure that they exempt. We don't pay property tax on our own property.
Government, no.
Right. So how long of a lease do you need before you can exempt the property?
A government?
Yeah. Government lease is something, how long can, does the lease have to be before we can exempt it from property tax?
Good Scott question.
Because I know that they do that for public utilities as well.
Can we put this on two pages next time, maybe?
No, I'm going to resend it. I'm going to give it to you on two pages. This is a good one to have.
Oh, that's better.
Just wanted to note, in the smaller print, there was 50,000 added for concession at Joe Machado, and 4,000 for the skateboard park fencing from the last meeting.
Are you sure that was in there?
Yes.
Can I see it?
It's somewhere.
It's at the bottom.
Jen, did you have anything else to add?
And the reason why it's kind of small is because we added all of these buckets to, so we can better track.
Oh, yes.
Now we'll actually be able to, so next year, if I can, we'll be able to see accurately how much revenue each program is generating.
So we all have the right prescriptions for our classes?
So I'll just repeat for the mic, for the microphone, that we added quite a few extra line items for each recreational program that recreation has, like Pony League, let's see, let me go down to, actually, it's Day Camp, Gymnastics, Adult Volleyball, Basketball, Soccer, so that she can better track as she spends and compare it to the revenue side, so it's more of a business-oriented perspective of her programs. And now we're moving to harbor, if, oh. Harbor Fund. And although you saw maybe a few, just two pages for harbor revenue, because it's revenues just really went fun, on the expenditure side, you're going to see more than two. Because you can have, you can do that on the expenditure side. So there's about four, I'm checking to see if they're in the right order. They should be, now let's see. The first one is 103-50 or Harbor Support Services, and this is really public works-related staff and programs. So you'll, you actually see the beach maintenance, you actually also see the county contract that Brian was talked about, spoke about earlier. The restroom contract and shower facility contract. And salaries are related to public works. Not really any one-time expenditures here or changes. We have a slight increase in the beach maintenance contract for $3,000. Related, I believe, we've added some for sand, increasing sand. And the fund is divided into several sections. The next one, if you're interested, we can, we can pause if you're still looking at it.
So the 290 in new costs, kind of like in the middle, all that stuff that wasn't there?
Yes.
Was just changing the county principles?
You know, and you'll see it's the admin overhead and general insurance. These, in several instances in the prior year's budget, admin overhead was, in the case of the general fund, this isn't the general fund, was lumped into one number. So when you looked at the departments, you didn't see the admin overhead in their budget, but it was lumped into one number, general overhead for, so all of that had to be kind of spread out. So in this case, for harbor, it wasn't budgeted in this fund, I believe it was budgeted in, actually, it looks like it was budgeted in 103-71. In some cases, I have to say that we did change the prior year's allocation of funds. I think last year, certain funds, like the infrastructure funds, which normally capital outlay, were charged overhead, and we removed that process because it's really for capital, not for overhead charging. So in condensing and reducing the number of funds we charged, it hit other funds harder that you could charge. So there is an adjustment here that you'll see from the prior year budget to the current year budget in that change.
And opposite of that is we had a few funds that, because they were so upside down, there was not an administrative overcharge charge. CKV is an example.
Right.
We didn't allocate a charge to that because it was already.
Upside down is the key word there. Where would we put the portable restrooms that we may need to get?
That's a good one.
For Casino Point?
We didn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
So we'll add that to the budget?
Yes.
We've got a revenue stream to add to it too, if you'd like to talk about that.
Sure.
Or the other things?
I think we need to speak to our friend Scott first.
Right.
So from 2009, 2010, the numbers were about one-tenth of what they ended up being the next year, 2010 to 2011. Under salaries and benefits, we had a 348,000 dollar number in 2009, 2010, and we jumped to 2,449,000 the next year. What happened there?
Oh, you're in the next page, I'm sorry. 10370 Admin Fund?
Yeah. It was a big, big, big change. Maybe somebody decided that they needed to take a look at that and they had to reevaluate. Those numbers went way up.
There may have been a consolidation of fund, it looks like it's all staff there. Yes. And I have to say, there's been some merging and with the harbor fund, creating of the 70 and 71 fund. Budgetarily, it was created, but within the financial system, we only had one, we didn't have, I believe, a 71. So it's, this is, this might be a little dirty because of this consolidation and pulling out of data. But what I can look into is just consolidating it as a whole, so you can see the trends. So it doesn't seem so messy. Combining them both again.
So are we on the 10370?
Yes, 10370. And the add here is 18,000 for the wireless mower, moring log program, the development and also a mirrored server. And that, that's an ongoing amount each year for that system. Any other questions there? And you also notice there's a city attorney line item as well. These will be throughout the budget. This is related to any harbor-related services.
What is the contract services there?
The general?
Mm-hmm.
That has traditionally been, there hasn't been much expenditure there through the years, and that traditionally has been budgeted for. And Brian, did you?
The contractual services would be for the computer repair or the warehouse connection.
So the only thing is that there's no expenditure there, so we can take another look at that and see. Maybe it just needs to be moved to the bucket where the expenditure's happening.
Well, what caught my attention was a 3,412% change on the far right here.
Say that again, Bob?
If you look at the line item across the top, go all the way to the right-hand side of the page. The 3,000% change.
Oh, the adopted versus estimate, okay. So if we look at adopted column, yes, that is the 70,000 in city attorney services, which some of those, some of that charge was probably early sewer-related charge. And that's something we're going to look at in terms of if we move it out of that fund and move it elsewhere. It could be, I think it's the water, blue water, am I saying that correctly? Blue water contract? Related?
Blue water, that's the pier.
The pier. I'm forgetting the name of the contract.
Blue water is the pier.
Okay, so it's not sewer?
No, no.
It'd be a little, it'd be a little odd charging harbor a sewer fund.
We're going to look into the detail of the bills, it may, we get books. So we're going to see if we're going to need to move any of that out of there. So it's, but that's a. 10371. And I should note that that page we just looked at has Brian and Kate's salary in there, so it's just them. And then this particular one is all other staff. And have an increase in training and travel. So, and that's related to having staff represent to the harbor at various conferences and shows. And related to security, fire, safety, boat handling, CPR, EMT. And that's really the the change there.
Could we move the attendance at the shows to the community, community promotion?
And it would be paid for from general fund names?
Oh, you transfer from Harvard too, but it's, it represents promotion, it's not, I don't know, just maybe a little cleaner.
See if we can, that's that whole proprietary fund transferring money thing. But we can, we can look at it. Okay. And that's done, done with that one? And Harbor Support Services? And this is more of a capital improvement environment, so you're going to see expenditure for Cabrio Mole. This is the beginnings of, again, this money will most likely be transferred out of this account into a grant fund. But this is just pulling the money from their reserves. And that's just the beginning amount, it's a matching grant. We have an additional amount of $15,000 for railings. And remind me what beach that was on, the railings?
South Beach.
South Beach.
There's no beach anymore.
And that is expenditure at this point for that fund. We've got an increase in float storage of $2,000. And let's see, well, that's a flat. And that's the entire harbor fund.
I just wanted to give you guys a time check, so I don't know if you want to continue on. What you want to do. But it's almost 10, like over two hours.
We'll have one more agenda item too.
I don't know that spending the time going through each one of these individual funds is any more educational than us actually reading the document and then if you have questions on these particular funds to come back to you. I think you've laid out the structural design of how you're presenting the information, it's super clear to us as to how to waffle through it. Are you guys okay with that?
I'm fine. Oh, yeah, I need a lot of help with this. Individual help. I like the way it's laid out, I just have a lot of specific questions.
Right. So maybe we can, we can square away some one-on-one time, and you can sit down with Gina Doer, or whatever your specific questions are, does that work? Good for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
So you spent a week not talking, now you spent two hours talking.
So systematically, I think I get what you've designed and put together. Two concerns I have, or concerns or just comments. I recognize the importance of going in and making fee adjustments and bringing us up to, you know, the cost of living standard and so on. Did we do the same thing when we're forecasting wages and benefits to employees within this budget?
And I'm sorry, repeat your question.
So I recognize that our intention is to sit and meet with each one of the labor groups and go through the negotiation process and whatnot. We forecast our projected income, and we burden the ratepayer for whatever fee that is, and we make a cost of living adjustment. But it seems that every year we plan and produce a budget document, we don't do the same when it comes to the way we spend money. And I'm not saying that the cost of living adjustments are or not going to be something that will be achieved or not as a result of labor negotiations, but it seems sensible to me that we plug that number in, whatever that COLA adjustment is when we produce a budget document.
So you're saying for, for wages?
Right.
Okay.
It's going to take a lot of work.
It's going to take a lot of work, but as a, as a general principle, I think it's sensible to have that as a forecasted item, so that when you get to that 12th hour, it doesn't completely disrupt the entire budget planning process, because it will.
And it's, the CPI impacts a lot of different line items, right? So it's, it's not something that we can't plug in and identify what an next CPI increase would be on that, and identify what the cost, and have it ripple through all of this. So, but it would be, that isn't impossible to do, I just wanted to let you know that. So it's something you can, to just visualize what impact that would have on all funds, it would travel through the 101 Fund, to the 102, to Harbor, to all the funds. So that is a, something that we can look at.
Because I think at the end of the day, when you're trying to, when we're trying to determine, you know, whether, whether or not we have a balanced document sitting in front of us, the one that we codify and say, yeah, okay, this is the budget we're going to be operating on, I think that that adjustment has to be made, so you know where you are.
And if I understand you correctly, it's, you're looking at retro concepts?
No.
No, okay, so just from today forward?
From the time, you know, you go from, you know, last year to this year, you've got to look at just that year. Now, I recognize that we have not done that historically, so there's going to be, there's going to be a kind of a gray area there, but.
And so if I, and so you're looking at a forecast, basically, which is the next step in our process? It's, it's a forecast, it's not only a budgetary forecast, but also a cash forecast.
Well, it's a cash flow forecast, and we're not talking about just this year, but, you know, future years. We can ignore the future year thing for a minute, but at the end of the day, and let's just, let's grab an example. Let's say that we pass and approve this budget, and we have made the assumption that this budget is balanced. And let's say through the negotiation process, one labor group, and it doesn't matter who it is, winds up getting a cost of living adjustment within their negotiation process and their powers to do so. This document now is out of balance.
Correct.
And so we're going to have to go running back and cut here, cut there, or change the way we're spending money, and change the color of money. So I think that as we, once we've determined that all of these buckets are where, where we want them, and this process is complete, you need to make some sort of cost, or as we go through it, make some sort of COLA adjustment in there, so that the document is true and correct, rather than waiting for a six-month budget review. Then you get to that six-month budget review, and you're making what could be dramatic changes in the way we color money. Yes?
This budget is an annual budget, annual summary? Do we have monthlies? Are there monthlies? Do monthlies exist?
Yeah. As I choke on that, yes, it's, we're still working in the same process that we have before, and it's, we're hoping after this week, with auditors here, maybe a little bit more finalized, that we can bring items over to the test environment and create monthly financial reports. That's our next goal.
How about a, just for a placeholder, to put in half the COLA on the salaries for this budget?
I think that'd be at least a step in the right direction.
Yeah, so assuming that we get this thing done by just October sometime, and so then we'll sit down, we'll know where we are, so we can sit down, do the negotiating, and let's say we can complete that by December, so let's say it's a COLA, so if we put in half the COLA in for the salaries in this budget, at least we won't be that far out as a starting point.
And you mean by half a COLA is?
Like six ounces.
Okay, okay.
What was it, 1.7 or something like that?
I'll look, I'll look at that.
Well, in this budget, there's.
And we need to do the same with all of our contractual stuff that has that, is part of the element, right?
Yeah, that has been done, that has been reviewed.
That'd be a whole.
It's included.
And this process is going to take an awful long time to get right, because the actions of the, of the state taking away ACIA from us, not only devastated us, but devastated about 400 cities. We're not alone.
Well, Ralph, you're right on the mark, but the, but the reality is, is that we have to move forward and move on, and we need to build and develop a structural program so that we can continue to operate and provide the same level of service to our residents and our visitors that they've been expecting and that they're paying for, and to try to create an environment where we don't have disruption of service. At some point in time, you get to a place there where you're going to have to make hard-line choices between whether it's wage benefits, whether it is services you provide the community, whether it is programs that either stay or go, so that we can keep city government running. Or do you go back to the fee program? You know, the whole concept and process of, of us providing government services to the public, I mean, that's our job, okay? And there are certain things you need to keep, because they have to be there, and there's certain things that you can live without. And those are the hard-line decisions that need to be made, when you're making the decision between whether or not you can ever flush a toilet again, okay? And/or you provide, you know, banner installation on Front Street. You know, there's a disparity, obviously disparity between those two things, but whether or not we get any money from the state or not, we still have to move forward. And we just have to figure out how to, how to structure that, so that we move forward.
That's right.
We can't dwell on the state, they're not going to change their program.
We need to have a fairly good handle on what we really have. This is a real good step in the right direction, but there still needs to be some fine tuning.
Oh, $2.7 million for the fine tuning.
Amen, you got that one right, that's right.
And so I think we've made a, we've made a significant step in trying to document our cash flow, our buckets, where, where our revenue streams are, where our expenditure streams are, and now the next, the difficult step is going to have to be jump back in this thing and add efficiencies. You know, where is the money best spent? How can we improve services in one area? How do we, you know, reduce man-hours in a particular area? Those are the things where the cost savings are going to be realized.
Efficiency.
Efficiency.
You got it.
It doesn't help us when we have our, our expense stream, and let's, let's jump back to the fuel one, fuel all departments, utilities all departments, just like Gina was saying, we need to be able to segment that and determine where our strengths are and where our weaknesses are.
And we probably need to pay attention to what these other 400 cities have done, you know, including going bankrupt, all the way to all those potential ones that are going to go bankrupt, and then what they're doing. And there's lots of things we can learn from some of the decisions that have already been made. Fee structures, for instance, or salary structures, some cities have, have actually drew a line and say, all those employees that are, that are here now will live up to whatever the agreements were with the, with the unions, but starting like next month or next year, we're going to set a whole new set of standards for, for wages. That's what some cities are already doing. And that's, that's where the hard part comes in, when you start really looking at that, looking, looking at, there's so many things out there that, that are going to be painful, and we got to let people know that it's not going to be easy, we can't just say, yeah, it's okay. We, we had that ACIA income, that even though, even though we were careful about what, what we did, if we were able to use ACIA money to fix the street, for instance, which we could do, now we don't have that. Now we got to go from General Fund or whatever, use that money, so that's less money we had. So granted, the ACIA, we've been real careful with that, but still, it's going to impact the General Fund. And, and so you got to take a really good, hard look at it, where are we really? And this is the closest thing to a forensic accounting that, that I've seen since I've been here, 14, 14 budgets. This has really impressed me. But now, when you, when you have this, now you got a lot more questions. This is going to take a while, but I think this is a good start, a really good start.
But at the end of the day, the ACIA money goes away. Yeah, it's gone, okay? And we have close to a balanced document in front of us.
No, 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 no. Can't balance it on reserves.
Well, it's closer than it was three weeks ago.
Okay.
But at the end of the day, we're still not fixing a sewer system. We're still not repairing the mall. We're still not taking care of some of those things that are our bread and butter, that are creating the economy in which we exist, so we have some work to do. Okay, shall we move on to our closed session item?
Can I, can I request manpower schedule?
Sure. And Ole's concept of being able to look at this on a, on a timely basis and get monthlies, and so that we can act appropriately when we see a flare go up in the air, I think is, is critical. I know we've been working on that, we've been talking about that for some time.
Whereas the boat's taking on water.
Right. We have a closed session now for a public employee appointment. Everyone good? All right. Enjoy your day, guys. Okay, we've returned from closed session, and we have no, nothing to report. Anyone else have any, anything to add? Okay. We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.